6:31, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Before we go any further tonight, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Parkhurst, who has a very special introduction to make tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Griffin. We are pleased to announce Reagan Lapage has been elected as our junior class Board of Ed member, so student board member in waiting. Reagan ran against another junior, Sean Cornell, and they videoed their platforms. I emailed the videos out to our families. They've been on our monitors here at school and, of course, our staff and students have had the opportunities to hear Reagan and Sean during their guided study halls last week. And over the weekend, I emailed Reagan to let her know that she was the successful candidate. So Reagan is, she's a familiar face to GRB. I'm sure you've seen her on the WGRB. She's one of our main anchors for WGRB. So congratulations, Reagan, and welcome.
Congratulations, Reagan.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Now, we're seeing we had a chance to fill you in on how time-consuming this can be at times. And Sam, do you have anything you want to offer before we move on?
I don't think so.
Just want to give you the chance.
Thank you.
Well, welcome aboard, Reagan, and we hope that this is a great year for you as you prepare for your place at the table next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move us on to item 1.02, approving the agenda from the 13th. Would someone move that, please?
Move it.
Is there a second discussion?
Ms. Griffin, in addition to a name that you had, I have one addition that you need to, on your copies that you got, it wouldn't have been on there, but it is on the website in section 7.11, there's a name added for a subcleaner. It's on the website one, Michael Regano. Wouldn't have been on your copy that you received at your home, but it is on the website.
And how about, there's the added resolution?
And then there's the added resolution, which is 5.1 second.
I think it's 04.
I believe it is. I'm looking at my pages aren't turning right. Yes, 5.04, we received the resolution for our payment settlement for Golden Sun.
All right, are there any other additions or corrections? If not, we moved it, right? We moved it and seconded, so Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes.
Okay, Mrs. Cooper?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Crandall? Mr. Digilarm?
Yes.
Mr. Cordone?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes, again.
Mrs. Alvogor? I'm looking at Mrs. Alvogor, thank you.
And as a reminder, in lieu of public forum, we encourage people who have questions or comments to submit them to the Board Clerk email. You can find that on our website. It is clerk, here I go again, clerk@folton.cnyric.org. Would someone move item 1.04? Move it.
Second?
Discussion? Mrs. Perry, I am a yes.
Okay. Mrs. Cooper?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Digilarm?
Yes.
Mr. Cordone?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvogor?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Item 1.05, please.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
I'm a yes.
Mr. Digilarm?
Yes.
Mr. Cordone?
Yes.
Mrs. Alvogor?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Under President's Report, the first item is the completion of our proposed resolutions for the NISBA annual meeting, and we have a due date on those to be done by the 21st of October, and we will review these or the ones in question at our next board meeting, I believe with the 27th, excuse me. And Mr. Cordone, that'll all be forwarded to you because you are a voting delegate?
Great.
Okay, so if you have any questions or any difficulties with the online, please let me or Mrs. Perry know. We'll be glad to help you. Are there any questions with the upcoming meetings? Okay, I'd like to turn this now over to Superintendent Paul Vino for his reports. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, and welcome to Reagan and Sam. It's good to see both of our students here on the air. And it's really important, our students' voices are essential. We aren't here as a district without our students. So you really, you are a valuable component. I don't know why we waited so long to get students on our board. So we're thrilled and welcome, Reagan, and you and Sam are going to be a formidable pair. I can already see it, and that's what we look for. So thank you. Reopening update, Mr. Carroll, are you going to put it on your screen or would you like me to put it on mine? So if you could put that up, please, for our reopening plan. Our focus this evening is really going to be on instruction and innovation. Tried to really move things around a little bit and try to highlight some things. First, I want to say, maybe I'm biased, but I think we're doing a fabulous job here in Fulton. Each and every day, I get up and I hope that day turns into two days, turns into a week, and here we are now with September behind us, we're heading towards the middle of October. Our staff and our students are doing just such an outstanding job. I know it hasn't been an easy road, but I've seen other districts that are experiencing some challenges for a variety of different reasons. Hopefully, those stay in different places for us. I wish them all well. And as we move forward, we're looking to how do we strengthen and how do we continue on this path, because each and every day is an opportunity for us to make a difference for each and every one of our kids. So with that, can you go on to the next screen, please? Dan? Thank you. So our goal is, just to remind you, are to maximize our capacity to provide a safe, healthy, in-person learning environment for as many Fulton students as possible, provide a comparable online-only alternative to hybrid in-person instruction for families with health exposure concerns or the choice that they're making for their family for a variety of reasons, and provide the highest quality instruction possible in a year of constraints. So we've really been doing plan, reflect, evolve, repeat, really making sure that we're constantly checking, balancing, monitoring what's going on. And then we're also, we've been focusing on all the musts within the reopening guidance from the state of New York, but we also had selected a number of shoulds. And I think we selected some very good shoulds for us around the mask wearing, things like that. I saw an article where a couple of districts have gone from not wearing in class to wearing them. So I think we've done a lot of good things. We need to continue to stay on our game and stay active and monitoring, because complacency is when we start to make mistakes. So each and every week, we're constantly looking at our reopening plan and that document with the 78 items to make sure that we're holding our standards and looking for even better ways to do things. Next slide, please. So just to give you an idea of where our enrollment is, as of October 9th, our pre-K, as you can see, we're right around 30% of our kids are online. We're trending downward a little bit with our online only. We've had a few kids with disabilities come in. We've had some unique circumstances that we've worked with, so we've had a few kids coming in, and if I look at my data, we were at 458, but that's, and now we're at 446 between your two meetings. 6 through 8 is trending upward a little bit, and same thing with our high school. And our overall's trended up just a little bit. I think part of that we see is some of the COVID outbreaks, things like that, going on across the state, some uniqueness going on in some families and whatnot. So again, relatively stable, and we're starting our process of reevaluating that model right now, collecting information from parents around commitments for online only. And then this week, we'll be doing some more survey data, and then we'll spend the next week and a half with that data and information with an update to the board on the 27th. Obviously, the numbers are what drive our models. And the next one, I'm going to ask Mr. Lisi. Are you on there this evening, Mr. Lisi?
I am, Mr. Paul Vino.
Hi, Mr. Lisi. Could you please, I want to highlight this evening, the technology department, just to give you an idea of what's been going on in the area of innovation and technology. So, Mr. Lisi, please.
Sure, happy to do that. You know, I thought I would take a couple of minutes tonight just to kind of highlight some of the work that they're doing. Obviously, in my new role, overseeing a little bit more in the technology department, of course, I'm still partial to them, so I thought I'd share some of this information with you because it's pretty incredible. I'm a fan of accountability, and on top of that, as we all know, what gets measured gets done. I won't go through all the figures here, but I do want you to see some of these, some of the things that were, that have been done. The information you're seeing on these slides is only for September, which was 21 days in total, 21 workdays. And so some of the figures that were outstanding is over eight, the tech team took in over 8,000 emails that they responded to in that short period of time, which is, and you're talking about a total staff of 10 people. And you can see some of these figures in here, they took 540 calls in one day, which is pretty incredible by any standard. And so, and again, some of the figures here, we handed out 1,600 Chromebooks, over 100 hotspots, and so on and so forth. The reason why I share that isn't just for the tech team, although, again, I'm a huge fan. I think it's important to remember that the work that you're seeing here is indicative of the entire, our entire stakeholder group in our community, because, and the reason why I bring this up is because the tech team is very keenly aware of the fact that the work that they do is serving all of us, all of the stakeholders. So if you look at these figures, this is the work that they're actually trying to support. I think it's important to keep that in mind as we move forward. One of the things that struck me, kind of looking at all of this, is that one of the questions that we were asked quite a bit during this whole process was, what would instruction look like during this, the hybrid and online and so on and so forth? It was important to consider that, but it's not just instruction. During this whole change, a lot has had to transform, not just technology, but all of the groups that are working together. And this includes our students, our young learners, our teachers, and so on. And so as you kind of look through the figures here, I think it's important to keep that in mind. And what you're about to see, Mr. Carroll's going to share this with you shortly, is that you're going to see a group of professionals and young learners that have learned to learn differently, understand, adapt, and change kind of the way that we're working together. And I think that's important to keep in mind as we move along. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to share that with you.
Dan, can you just go back one slide there, please? Just, I just think when you, when you look at all of the different things that we've continued to keep the rudder deep, you know, whether it's our drone work, our blackboard, our website, these are all things that are part of our strategic coherence plan. Now, in the midst of all of everything else going on, we've tried to keep that rudder deep. So that's kind of hidden there, and that's one of those areas, innovation is a key part of our, of our strategic coherence plan. So I just wanted to draw attention to that. And thank you for the work that that crew has done. Dom, it's been fantastic what we've done, the fabulous work they've done, and it does take all stakeholders to make this thing work. They've done a nice job managing that. Dan, go ahead, next slide, please.
Sure, thank you. And I'd like to also reiterate that thanks to Mr. Lisi and the tech department. We could not instruct this year without a really strong technology department that is changing and evolving and supporting each day. Evolve and change continue to be the operative words of 2020-21 school year. You've heard us talk quite a bit about our plans, and we are now five weeks into the school year, five weeks into implementing our reopening plan. And in just a minute, we'll share, we'll share some of the experiences of our true experts here, who really are teachers and our students. But just, we wanted to give you a sense of the extent to which guidance around the areas of instruction continues to change. So if you recall, we received our reopening guidance from State Ed back in late July, implemented our, developed our plans in relation to those. And just in the last month, these are a couple examples of New York State Education Department guidance that has been issued, clarifying or giving some new insights into what we might be able to expect for the rest of the year. So first is a Q&amp;A doc that seeks to clarify some of the really major questions that districts have been asking since the guidance was issued around what constitutes a day out of 180 days when there's remote learning involved. It gives several examples of equivalent experiences to the traditional day, goes into some detail in relation to prioritizing learning outcomes over the traditional 180-minute definition of a unit of study, for example. The document gives some clarity in relation to how districts are now tasked with determining needs for intervention services with the lack of New York State assessment data that we usually would have. The additional update, which all of us are, you know, very eagerly keeping our eyes on and trying to read tea leaves and smoke signals, is in relation to assessments for this school year. We saw for the first time in a memo issued at the end of September, the key word of if, if it is determined that exams cannot be safely and fairly administered to students in person. We're starting to hear about 3-8 assessments and Regents exams in that frame of uncertainty. This memo goes on to state that the New York State Department intends to seek a waiver for these federally required exams if such waivers are offered. So we'll keep you posted on those. Now, as I said, we are eager and excited to share with you some of the experiences of our real experts, as I say. And that's very much the truth. The reality is, I've never taught in a remote or hybrid environment. None of my administrative colleagues have taught in a remote or hybrid environment. So this is a time when we need more than ever the voices of our teachers and our students to help us to reflect upon the plans that we put in place and to continue to evolve in relation to them. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Wilson to queue up our video. I will stop sharing my screen in a second. Our hope is that this will provide the best quality video feed, and I'll turn things over to four teachers and a guest student to describe how their experience this year is different than in any other year. So special thanks to Mr. Mainville, who's, for the first time, teaching in a high school hybrid environment. Mrs. Van Buren, who's teaching 4th grade in an online-only environment. Mrs. Lazat, who's teaching junior high, two days a week, in person, three days remotely in our hybrid junior high model. Dan Gilmore, who's teaching entirely online this year for the junior high. And our junior high teachers brought in a special guest. Special thanks to Owen Teis, 7th grader, who is giving the students perspective on learning in 2020-21. So hopefully, that was enough lead-in time for Mr. Wilson to have that ready. So I'm going to stop sharing so he can.
So, you know, one of the things I want to say is that, one, what a phenomenal team to be able to put a video together and start to collect. And we realize that it's important that at every one of these meetings, that we try to find ways to express more voices and experiences with all of you. And so thank you to Mr. Lisi and Mr. Wilson and Mr. Carroll for spearheading the video, and obviously to our teachers and our students who participated. I think we need to do more of that. I think that's the best litmus test that we have, is to actually hear the experiences that are out there right now. So what's happening moving forward? We did our commitment form on the 9th. I believe we had over 300 returned as of early this morning, I believe it was, on October 14th, if that's due. On the 15th and 16th, we'll do outreach to those families. We'll do the reopening survey. We'll be sent to all the families by the end of the week. The week of the 19th to the 23rd, STM, that's my leadership team, as well as my, all the other administrators, will analyze, update online-only commitments to evaluate the current model's capacity, and that's key. Because as you saw, we're pushing the limits. I think one of the things that we really wanted to do was maximize our opportunities for in-person learning. It was very clear from our families this summer in the many forums that we did. And then what we'll do is, the week of October 27th, we'll present to the board. 28th, we'll do a communication, and then the 16th of November is when we would make any modifications to our models. So it's ambitious, but I think, you know, a lot of districts, I'm not sure they're redoing or rechecking, but I think it's important that we do that and that we get a really good feel for what's going on out there at this time. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Brian, what are we, what are we doing to check in with our remote learners? Because I think the number you gave us last time was like a third of our students are learning totally remotely, and I totally can appreciate, you know, professionally as well, my experience aligns with what I heard in the video for our staff and our students, you know, reinforcing the effectiveness of small groups and knowing that we're meeting the needs of those students that are right in front of us. But I'm wondering, you know, are we also gathering, are we keeping in contact and in touch with, in the same fashion, with our remote learners as well? Because as I mentioned the last time, my concern is, is that eventually, that they will, they will remain in our data, and we're not going to be only accountable for the students who are in person, but also those students who are learning remotely. And I'm, I'm just wondering if this, if the plan, the model, is meeting their needs. What are, how are we gauging that?
It's a great question, Dave. One of the things that I'm going to speak to, and I'll ask either one of my principals that are on there, or my other administrators, but I think one of the things that we're doing is this week, because this is the mid-week or mid-week, mid-marking period, we're going to be collecting all that information and looking at how the kids have progressed to this point, the remote learners only. We also, in this district, have remote teachers that are working with remote students. So I don't know if Mark or Don, I see you're both on there. If you could just comment some of the experience that you have there. We don't have any elementary on, but I know that, Dan, you've been working with the elementary principals closely and getting feedback from them, but having to designate a remote teacher, I think, addresses some of that. So any of my administrators, you want to chime in?
From the high school perspective, all of our students are assigned to a guided study hall teacher. That's the lifeblood here at the high school. Every building has a student support team that monitors student attendance and student engagement. These teams meet weekly. And I don't know, Mark or Jerry, perhaps you have something else to add?
We use homeroom at the junior high school, and our online-only students in particular have a virtual homeroom, which is, has dedicated teachers. And right now, they're going through the Second Steps program. We just started this week, which they're going to be participating in virtually and filling out a Google form to record their answers. And we also, our SST team has been focusing a lot on attendance and on online-only students who aren't engaging. So we have a very long list of students that we reach out to weekly to check in on them and get them to be engaged and to see if there's anything that they need that we can do to remove any barriers to their learning. So it's turned into a huge focus for us at junior high school.
And at the elementary level, the students have online-only sections. So these students are completely with an online devoted teacher who meets with them every day, multiple times within the day. And so in that way, there are structures in relation to student support, working with school home liaisons where we are not interacting, or students having difficulty. Those structures are able to maintain, just as if the students were in school, that type of contact. We've also, our elementary principals also have really stepped up to have a weekly meeting specifically in relation to our online-only students, making sure that their messages are consistent when they're interacting with their online-only staff. And special thanks to Mrs. Samsel, who has stepped up additionally to have a weekly meeting with the online teachers as a principal to relay the messages from her elementary colleagues. So there's significant support wrapped around those online sections. So, there's significant support wrapped around those online sections.
Something I'd like to also add is, and this is really something that our district is really engaged in versus other districts. We don't mix our instructional classes. We have either, and I'm speaking from the high school, we have either all virtual sections or in-person, just to make sure that we're maximizing the level of engagement. We're not mixing, if there's instruction happening here in person, we don't have any virtual students within that group. So, that's something that, you know, and as Mrs. Lizat said in the video, it is a challenge, but at least if I'm teaching a virtual section, it's, my efforts are really going toward toward a group of virtual students versus the kids in front of me and online.
And I would just add, from a student support perspective, that we did learn many lessons in the spring about what it takes to develop a system and a structure to carefully track those students who are not with us in person. And the student support teams at each building have been doing an excellent job with their principals, and Liz Tiffany leading that work to make sure that when a teacher reports that they have been unable to be in touch with a student, or a student is not engaging regularly and learning online, that they are following up in a very systematic way, and following our multi-charity system of support to add additional layers of support, whether that be community agencies, or home visits, or other things that those students and families might need to connect with us to make sure that they are getting as much support as we can provide.
Okay. Thank you. Well, as you can see, I think we've learned a lot about teaching, learning, in this new world. So, we'll continue to provide updates. Just from the board, is this an approach you like hearing from our teachers more? I mean, obviously, we can get more on the screen. You only have so many boxes on the screen, and they start to get really tiny, but I think the idea of doing videos and having our capability, and now we can also put those on our website as well, as references. Obviously, everything from our board is on our website. So, I just want to thank the team for really thinking out of the box a little bit this time. And we look forward to our presentation on the 27th. As we update our information, and we get feedback from our stakeholders, and take us into our second marking period. So, we're excited about that. So, with that, I'll take us into our second presentation this evening. If there are no other questions. 2020 Extended School Year Program, that's our special education. Ms. Adams, would you like to take the lead? Would you like me to present, or are you going to present from where you are?
I will present, and I also want to introduce Carlo Cucaro, who is going to help present this with me tonight. He actually has control of the slide, so. But Carlo is there as well, so thank you, Carlo. And he was part of our ESY. I want to thank everyone for allowing us to present this information on special education for summer school. I will say, I know you have heard about this before at a previous board meeting, when we were in the midst of summer school for our students. But, I mean, I'd really like to present how successful I think it was in its regards. So, really, this is an overview of that. So, first, I'd like to talk about the structure of how it ran, and then we can get into, just to kind of summarize in the detail of how we planned for it. But our structure, actually, we ended up with 40 students who participated. That was in grades K to 12. Obviously, we had five classes. I think one less than we usually do. Two 611 management classes, three 1214, the more significantly involved students. We ran for the six weeks that were required, from the 6th through the August 14th. And a little difference this year is we ran AM/PM schedule, 8:30 to 11:00, and 12:00 to 2:30, and that allowed us for buses, cleaning of buses, cleaning of the classroom, and allowing for us to actually space the kids as we were required to do, given the language from, at that time, was camp guidance that we had to use to plan. Okay? And I'll turn it over to Carlo.
And I was saying, with AM/PM, what that also allowed us to do is really streamline our staffing. So, what you see here was the staffing for this summer. As we indicated, there were five classes, two 611s, and three 1214s. So, when you take into account the teachers and teaching assistants, that totals up the five teachers and eight teaching assistants. And given the behavioral self-help and emulation needs of a lot of our kiddos, they come with a fair amount of support in the form of aides. And then to round out that support, you have lots of related services, including a speech therapist, occupational and physical therapy. Nursing was incredibly important this year, and the staff there was just instrumental in kind of getting us off the ground and maintaining our success. And then we had adapted PE provided for lots of our special needs kiddos, as well as supervisor and school psychologist, which I had the pleasure of doing. And the staffing was, because of our AM/PM, really able to streamline that and be more efficient.
Also, initially, when we first were planning for summer school, we were planning for it to not be in person, because I think that's where this was headed. And then we received this last, I would say, Mr. Palvino, two-week notice that we were then allowed to participate in person, and we scrambled. We'd already sent out letters to families asking of their interest to be not in person, and whether they wanted instruction for their children of online learning to, okay, scrap that. Are you interested in sending them in person? And obviously, we had quite the response that yes, they would like to. Some families chose not, and we had that as well, some virtual instruction. But we sent out second set of letters, and we planned for very quickly with staffing. So, I appreciate all the support from the board, and Mr. Palvino, and all of the staff, Carlo, and Kip Harvey, and planning, getting staff ready, along with the training that needed to occur. We had surveyed the staff to find out who was interested, and almost all that normally would have worked or were interested still wanted to work and be in person. We met many, many, many times. I can't even tell you how many, but throughout the summer program, we met at least weekly, many times prior to starting, to plan all of what we needed to get going, along with all of the PPE, the training with Renee Hendrickson, Tracy Moser, helping us with the training for webinars for the staff in person, along with transportation, the planning of the transportation, the nursing, food service, and technology. So, we had a full day of staff orientation. Mr. Palvino joined us for that. We had our first stab at people coming into a building for the first time for our staff at all in the district. I think it went overall, I think it went well. I don't know if Mr. Palvino would weigh in differently. Checking in on the health form for the first time, doing the temperature check over at Lanigan, doing our orientation, going over cleaning protocols, and talking about how we would plan for preparing for the students for the first few days, first few weeks of school, actually. And we also, I think at this point too, we also talked about the busing. We had planned, the bus monitors were trained as well, about temperature checks, the PPE, how students would be seated on the bus. And prior to school starting, we sent out a letter to families with a visual guide on what would happen on the first day, which was just a bus orientation. Students practiced getting on the bus if it was appropriate for them, where they would see the temperature, and wearing their PPE mask.
In discussing summer school, every year, we talk a lot about attendance. Obviously, when you have the level of support put forth, you want to make sure that the kids are appropriately identified, and also, they're coming regularly. That's every year. And then you have summer school in the middle of a pandemic, and you really keep your fingers crossed that parents will send their kids, and kids will want to attend. Now, we knew out of the gate that parents were very supportive and excited about having the kids come, but you want to make sure that they feel that we're doing it the right way, and that kids and staff are staying healthy. We had a really good year of attendance in the midst of all this. As you can see, of the 40 students, we had 15 that had perfect attendance. They were there for all six weeks, every day. And then we had 31 students, almost 80%, that were there for 90% of the summer school, or better. So, it was really kind of a feather in our caps that the kids came, everybody stayed healthy, and parents were very pleased about that. Now, with respect to parents, what we tried to do with the direction of our administrative staff was solicit input from different stakeholders. Obviously, as Mrs. Adams was saying, we met regularly with the administrative team, and then we had regular faculty meetings to get input and kind of take the temperature, if you will, of how things are going. We also wanted to get feedback from parents and staff. So, at the end of the summer, we sent out an anonymous survey, relatively straightforward, asking them to rate their overall experience on a number of items. I apologize for the faintness of this copy, but parents letting us know, how did they feel that summer school impacted their child's engagement, interest in school, motivation to learn, their academic skills? And then the last one, we thought was important, return to school after a COVID-19 closure, just that reintegration. And then finally, any comments that they wanted to offer. And we got really excellent response rates. This was obviously a cherry-picked one, but I'll be honest, it was, I could have chosen any out of a hat, and they were overwhelmingly positive. And some of the comments were very encouraging. As this parent indicated, my child was very happy to be in school, being able to physically engage in activities, which is a big, big thing for our students with special needs. The other source of input was directly from teachers. And I won't read all of these to you, but you can kind of look at them and get a sense of the scope of what they were considering. One was just being happy to be back seeing kids. There was such overwhelming positivity about being able to see kids in buildings and hear kids. And then also, looking at their skill development. And the last two, I think, are a testament to the board's support and our administrative support in terms of making sure that teachers had information, and were trained, and other anxieties were addressed. And finally, that we took care of all those things around cleaning and PPE, and some of those trickier things that come with kids with special needs, and we're able to navigate that early, and lead to a really smooth summer program.
And really, thank you, Mr. Palvino and Ms. Fallon Cooper, you were there as well, for arranging a visit from State Ed, which, you know, say if you want State Ed to come, well, we welcome them, Shannon Tahoe and Chris Soriano. I think it was beneficial for both sides, them as well as us. It was kind of eye-opening. I think I took that anyway, as I'm visiting the classrooms. I think it was their first time, if I am not mistaken, to see students being in a classroom since the closure in any district. I don't think they had visited any other districts in the state. And I think looking at classrooms with the storage of furniture was an interesting observation that Shannon had. And Mr. Soriano had a lot of questions too, about what was happening in the classroom, but I think it was beneficial on both ends. And I really appreciate that that occurred, Mr. Palvino, for arranging that. Lastly, we just wanted to thank everybody, and I think I wanted to add, in addition to Golden Sun, business office, food service, transportation, huge, staff, maintenance. Mr. Owls was very, very instrumental as well, the technology department, parents, teachers, and staff, and the board, obviously, for allowing us to have a very successful summer school this past year. Thank you.
Yeah. I can't extend enough my appreciation, and Kathy alluded to the fact that on June 5th, at 5 o'clock, the governor announced that. On the 4th, he had announced no in-person summer school in the state of New York. And then on the 5th, at approximately 5:30, I know exactly where I was, I was in my car driving, when I started getting texts from Kathy, and Carlo, and everybody said, we want to do this.
I had to join a lakeside dinner, and I said, what, what is this on a Friday evening?
And by Monday morning, they had started reaching out to our community, as far as our families, as well as our staff. And by Monday afternoon, I think we were getting ready to go green lights. It's amazing what we pulled off with very little guidance. And so, I can't express, after 30 years around summer school, extended school year, special education, I would say that this one is number one. And I was in charge of just a few over the years. So, I have a pretty good comparison group, and I thought I ran some pretty good ones. This one was well above and beyond for what you accomplished for our kids. So, I mean, I have no problem saying that, because that's a high bar. And many of the school districts in our state, including our local BOSIs, did not run our programming. We took this risk. We learned a lot, and I think it's helped us this fall, learning and growing, and helping us other reopening plans. So, you were truly, I think I used the word, you are our pioneers, is the word I think I used at the orientation. You truly were. So, thank you, and please express that to your staff. So, yeah, you're welcome. The next presentation will be our 2020 Summer Credit Recovery Program. Ms. Parpurst and Mr. Waldron, if you could share, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Capani. Let me try that again.
All right.
All right.
I can hear you. All right, are you going to present the slide?
Yeah.
All right. So, at the junior high school, we did an entirely virtual summer school. We started off with 18 students who had registered. And our staff was Karen Knoll, who specialized in science, Laura Lizat, who specialized in English and social studies, Tammy Caruana, math, and then we had two teaching assistants who helped, Roz Nichols and Nell Capelletti. The program was coordinated by Dan Sherman. And what we tried to do, we had a pretty innovative approach. We tried to incorporate every discipline into two units, and those two units were aligned to standards. We actually had teachers, students who were registered, fill out forms prior to summer school, identifying the standards that they lacked in the most, in order to address them in summer school on a more individual basis. And so, we had about two one-and-a-half-week units, then incorporated every discipline, including health, into these mini-projects, and ultimately, the final project. So, when we get the slide up and running, the unit that I wanted to talk briefly about was called COVID-19 and reopening schools, very timely unit. So, in this unit, English would teach a lesson, a skills-based lesson. What we really wanted to do was incorporate skills into content in order to make it more deep and engaging for the students, and then into a project-based approach, engage. And so, English did a CCIC essay, which was a Claim Citation Interpretation Conclusion Essay. This was the final project for the union, where they talked about how we should open schools, and how we should transition back to schools. It was an essay that they had to use evidence from articles and videos, and they had to use it to convince an administrator what we need to do to get schools open. The science aspect of that handled the spread and contamination of infectious diseases, while the social studies aspect talked about the Spanish Flu pandemic 100 years ago and its effects on schools. And then the math aspect of that used equations, percent ratios, and word problems to talk about COVID cases and how rapidly it spreads. For example, they would use the number of positive cases to the number of total cases, and she would teach ratios and percentages with that content. And then they even incorporated health with a guest speaker from Oswego County Hospital to talk about the hygiene aspect of it, the hand washing, masks. And all of this was incorporated into their final project, in which they conveyed, using this evidence, how we're going to open schools safely. So, very timely, very cool. And it actually became the basis of the discussion of the schedule running now, where we're trying to head more towards a project-based model incorporating English and social studies, and science and math. So, it kind of, these teachers got the ball rolling. And the level of engagement, the students really ultimately convinced us to give this schedule a try, given the unique times that we're in. And they set it up to kind of be like a video too. So, the badges that you see in the presentation So the badges that you see in the presentation, the badges were the work that was assigned, the goal for the day, the activities, the mini projects, the collaboration. And if students successfully participated and completed everything that they needed for the day, they would earn a badge. And so they competed to earn badges. And ultimately, we had nine students achieve all ten badges for both units. Four were incomplete, but they were close, close enough to get credit. And we had five that we attempted to make contact with and to get engaged, and we did not. So really cool program. The teachers did an excellent job. Mr. Sherman did an excellent job running it. And by all accounts, the survey that they gave at the end and the student feedback, Ms. Lizat sent me an email with a lot of feedback on it. It was really cool just to hear how fun, how much fun the students had, you know, working with the teachers again after having those few months off.
All right, questions for Mr. Kapany? I'm going to move right into the high school, summer school program, credit recovery.
Donna, you're not on the screen. Do you want me to try to present?
Oh, it says I'm sharing. Let's see here. Sorry. Mark, did they not see that?
It wasn't up when I was going, but I thought you were working.
Sorry about that. Yep. Brian, do you have it right there?
Yep, I do. I will present.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Waldron was our program coordinator over the summer, and he's joining us this evening. You can see our staff from our credit recovery summer school program. We did have one teacher from each of the core areas, teaching assistant support. Mr. Murray was really the liaison to the elective area teachers, communicating with the elective area teachers in terms of how our students were doing with their electives. Jenny Coleman worked with our world languages and really helped support our English language learners, and we did have special ed support from Kara Palmer. And looking at our numbers from this, from this past summer, we had seventy-five students enroll in at least one course. Sixty students were successful in recovering one course. Eight students were engaged, but just were not able to finish. We had seven students through a lot of efforts of Mr. Waldron and our staff, did not, chose not to engage in the summer. And then looking at students enrolled in two or more courses, you can see twenty-nine students were enrolled, and fifteen of those students recovered two or more courses. You can see in the next slide the breakdown of each of, each of our courses. Total students enrolled, number that dropped, and the course credit earned. So you can look at that by credit. And then in the next slide, you can see our elective non-core courses offered and course credits earned, and you can see the specific elective area courses here. And then a breakdown, the next two slides, this one here is a look at, at it by credits offered. Eighty, eighty credits were recovered over the summer. Eighteen not, is a nice visual. And then in the next slide, looking at it by students. So sixty students completed at least one course in the green, and in the red, sixteen. Really, really looking at it as an entirely virtual model over the summer. Really, this was met with success in terms of credits earned. And then in our last slide, it really boils down to the students that were successful, and we had five seniors able to graduate as a result of this summer program. Mr. Waldron and team were out on the road each and every day. You can see they did about a hundred and fifty home visits. They were helping kids log into their Chromebooks, helping them navigate through Google Classroom. Edgenuity is the credit recovery program that is, was used in most cases, and Mr. Waldron was helping navigate through Edgenuity, just really getting the kids going and motivated and talking to the kids about what it will mean for them to earn the course credit, reminding them of graduation requirements, dropping off, picking up work, and just that instructional support that our kids needed, again, keeping in mind that they had not been in school since, since March. So Jeff, I don't know, really a tribute to you and the team for this accomplishment over the summer. I don't know if you have anything to add. You did a great job.
Were they, were students only allowed to recover one credit?
No. No, we opened it up, and we, we found that students struggled more with just, with just two credits, but we, we opened it up to whatever they needed.
There were some students.
Something that we haven't done in the past, but given that it was a new virtual situation, we thought we would try, we would try that.
We had some students, sorry.
I was just going to ask one follow-up question. For those students that weren't engaged, what, you know, as we connect to the earlier presentation, are these students currently attending at all physically, or are they also, just by chance, also choosing to be remote at this time? Do we know that?
Yeah, there, it's a mix. I'm still doing a lot of home visits with the alternative ed students, and there's a couple students that would come up in SST that are on our radar now, and we had engaged with them through summer school. So even though they're not an alternative ed student that technically falls under my umbrella, I'm still doing home visits with some of, some of them because they chose to continue with online learning. But we had students over the summer enroll in as many as five courses. Nobody completed five courses, but the ones they were being the most successful with, they stuck with. They realized maybe they were in a little bit over their head trying to recover that many. But, you know, it's always disheartening when we try to get a kid to engage and they don't, but I think that's typical of summer school for every year. We offer summer credit recovery, and students choose not to do it, and they say, I'll just make it up next year. I want my summer. So I don't think that was anything new, but it was an opportunity that we, we really wanted the kids to take advantage of. And I mean, it was less than ten kids that didn't take advantage of something, so I thought we were pretty successful with that.
Sure. I just wonder about those kids now, because avoidance is human nature, especially at that, you know, their age. And, you know, if, if it's optional for them to attend, as it is in person or remotely, I just, I wonder, you know, how we're able to provide a different outcome, perhaps, even though we're in a new school year. That's all.
Right. A lot of my conversations on the home visits wrap around, even though you're learning virtually, you have to look at it as if I'm still going to school every day, get up at seven thirty, log into what you would have for your first bell class, and I'm trying to counsel the students as well as the parents, because it's new to them also. And a lot of the parents, they take off and go to work, and they assume if they don't hear from anybody, things are going okay. So if they're not going okay, it's really important that we communicate with the parents. So I try to do a lot of my home visits. I mean, I got home today at quarter to five, because when I go later in the day, I can catch the parents and the kids, more productive conversations.
Any other questions?
All righty. Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Parkhurst, and Mr. Waldron. I will present here myself, I guess, on this one. I'll do, I'll drive myself here. Remember, when I'm driving, I can't see all of you, so please speak up. Let me see here. All righty. One second. So one of the things we were asked to do is provide an update with respect to Fulton City School District shared decision-making. And one of the things I think goes well here is it's all of our site-based teams that go on in our schools. And then we obviously have our strategic coherence planning team, and we also have all of our DSEP work that we do, our improvement plans from the state. So any work in this area always starts with our focus on our mission and our vision, and our mission and vision has not changed even during times of COVID. And the focus, I think, one of the biggest words on here, when you really look at all the words there, is hope and resilience for the future. And if we're not working on resilience in this time, that's one word that really typifies what, everything we're trying to do, that we're all trying to be resilient through these very interesting and challenging times, but times where we're learning a lot about ourselves and about our students. And also, it just reinforces our beliefs. And these beliefs are very, very appropriate in any time, from starting with all of our students can learn, to ensure that positive, safe and supportive environments are vital, and that's either virtually or in person. One of the things we were asked to do is just provide an update. Shared decision-making in New York State actually dates back to nineteen ninety-four, and one hundred point eleven is participation of parents and teachers in school-based planning and shared decision-making. And I'm not going to read this, but this right off their site, and really focuses on improving the educational performance of all students in the school regardless of socioeconomic, race, sex, language, background, disability, and so forth. And one of the things that, we don't have a policy for shared decision-making, but we do have a policy for Title I parent involvement, and that's our policy nineteen ten. And when you go through that, if you'd like, we can, I can also provide it to you. It really overviews our process and the importance of making sure that we have all stakeholder groups present as part of our shared decision-making. And that evolves in decisions being made at the local level. You know, we provide our strategic coherence plan, and we provide those, those higher-level goals, but at the building level, that's where the staff and the students and the parents and the families and community members really start to target that work as part of their site-based teams and really have it fit with the DNA of their buildings. So that's really the work, and, you know, they start to make decisions that are in the best interest of their communities in alignment with the district. So our parent involvement policy, which is looked at each year and ratified, actually goes through that whole part with respect to how we implement the required district-wide parental involvement policy. But it really is, it really overviews the entire shared decision and site-based team work that we do. The goals of our site-based teams are here on the screen. Leadership to support improvement of student achievement, communicate with school and district committees, leadership to promote school community and climate, setting goals for the school to support achievement, and validation of the school improvement plan. We do this every fall. We normally get together, and we're talking about holding a, probably at this point, still be virtual, but a virtual district-wide site-based team meeting, which we do every year, where we overview those expectations for teams. And we have site-based teams in all of our schools, and they approach it a little bit differently, but very consistently. But the goal is, with all of our plans, this is the strategic coherence plan, provides that overall kind of direction and guidance, and then each of our schools really tailors their work to that strategic coherence plan. So everything that they do in their site base is really an opportunity for them to make decisions at the local level in the best interest of their schools. So that's kind of the high-level overview. I was asked to do this presentation just to give a high level of where we're at, provided you some, some background information with that. Are there any questions around that? I know that I had received a couple, and that's why we provided this brief overview. And again, the district site-based team will be meeting probably in the next month, early November is what we're looking at, possibly November ninth. But you will all be invited, as you are annually, to that annual meeting as well.
Brian, how are we communicating with parents what site bases are available in their school, what they're doing, and how they can participate?
So one of the things that we've been talking about is we have to make sure that we're doing those communications from the building level. So all of the minutes, we're going to make sure are on the sites for each, each school. And then also, I think, extending those opportunities, Ms. Cooper. I think we're learning that there are opportunities for subcommittee work, because there are some great skill sets that others that may not sit on that, that, what do they call it, the central team, if you will, for the school, will bring that. I think we're experiencing a little bit right now with some of our school security work right now, bringing some people that bring some other interests and knowledge and skills to the table. So I think we're going to discuss that with our principals as we continue to evolve with that this year.
Okay, because I think parents struggle with, we hear these words like site base, but we don't know exactly what the focus is. So communicating that with parents. And each building is focused on different things and to see how they want to participate. I think we really need to push that communication piece there.
I would just like to ask that, however we decide we're going to communicate, that it is the same for every building? Because it is very frustrating to think you know where it is, and it's in a different place, and that doesn't make sense. But we just need everything in the same place as related to site, so I can go to any building and find it in exactly the same place, minutes, opportunities.
Getting it all down. Yeah, we have talked about using the same language and vocabulary, so it doesn't matter which school you look at, you'll be able to find it and use the same, same information, if you will, same terminology.
Yeah, because I agree, Robyn. It'd be good for not only parents to get the information, but grandparents and other community members, so they know what we're doing at that local level with the community involved. So people who don't have children at home know where to look as well to see what we're doing.
So we'll put that up, and we're going to discuss it at our next meeting with our principals. Actually, we've been, that was on our list of things. And with our new websites in each of the schools, I think this lends itself to our next great opportunity to work on our communication components. I had two other things this evening, just verbally more than anything. Our safety and security subcommittee has been meeting. That's really evolved out of the school resource officer, changing kind of our approach at the high school level when the city made the determination that they wanted to go in another direction, which was, which was fine. We did have a fan, we've had a couple of meetings now. We've outlined kind of our expectations and our overview of the things that we're looking for in this type of role. We're looking at, we've looked at the state guidance, which ranges from having a school resource officer to having more of an approach from a mental health perspective. There's some districts that have security officers, and some actually look at an independent type of person that they may hire in that type of role. There's a variety of different approaches, as outlined by New York State. That was actually a change in the guidance one year ago, a little over a year ago, from New York State. So we've been asked to go through the process. As of this date, we actually met with a representative. A number of the school districts have their school resource officer program. They made the decision to go more through the sheriff's program. So we had an officer who oversees that program share, I believe it was, it seems like it was forever ago, but I think it was last Thursday. We just had our meeting with them. He provided us information, just overview of costs, different expectations. He actually shared the memorandum of agreement with another district where we could see all of the things outlined. It was quite a bit of information that was shared with that entire task force team. Our next meeting is actually going to have from New, from New Justice, and they're going to be coming in, and they're going to be presenting, and they're more of a mental health perspective, restorative justice, restorative practices type of approach, more of a mental health type of approach that they'll share. I think the opportunity, meeting with these different groups, is allowing us to get a broader perspective and understanding as we design what we want to have our program looks like here in the Fulton City School District. We're also going to reach out, we're reaching out, and we may have done so already, I haven't made the connection here yet today, but we're reaching out to, there's a district in our region that actually does it through more privately with a person. They don't do it through the sheriff's, they don't do it through a firm type of thing, so we're getting that information as well. So we're exploring what different districts are doing. Our goal is to come to you on December the eighth, which I believe is the second Tuesday in December, with a, like, update and a recommendation to the board about next steps. And I know that Fallon and Mick serve on that committee. I'm looking to see, Jerry wasn't at the last meeting. Looking around to see who else's faces were there. Ms. Parkhurst was. Uh, I'm looking around to see else's faces, were there, Ms. Parkhurst was there? Uh, any, anybody that was in that meeting that you'd add to anything that I said this evening? Okay. Uh, so I hope I captured that well for everybody. It's been a really neat team. We're learning, uh, there, uh, people are coming out and sharing a lot of experiences and knowledge that you didn't know people had, so it's, it's been pretty neat. Um, and then finally, the capital improvement, uh, project update. Um, Lanigan, I've been sending you photographs. I get what they call a Raven superintendent update every day. You probably think I'm going, taking all these pictures myself for Al is, Mr. Crump is, but in fact, there is a document that we get every single day, the following day, um, with an overview of the work that was completed the day before, including photographs. So I've been taking those photographs and downloading and sharing them with the board. I'm contemplating, um, placing them on the website as a way to show an anthology, the story, to tell the story, um, over time. I saw another district recently that's doing that, um, and I think it's a really great way for the community to see how something is evolving. Um, it's really powerful when you're doing it, when the work is being done inside schools because people can't see that, um, going on. Um, we also have got a prioritized list. If you remember, we were going back to the drawing board because of COVID, costs were coming in a little bit higher, so we had made some, some, uh, say, some decisions where this fall, we're just doing that Lanigan site work, and then we'll be doing site work, um, at Valney and at the junior high come spring, late spring, early summer next year. However, we also were reprioritizing the work internally. King and King has provided us a prioritized list. We have a meeting on the 16th, which is this Friday, and then I will reach out, um, next week and I'll see if, um, Nick and Robin, as representatives of the board, you had attended that last meeting. If we want to come back around as a next step after we go through this prior, if we, as we prioritize the prioritized list with King and King, um, and LaChase this Friday, we'll come back around with that next week. Um, because one of the things that's required is that we do, um, work inside the buildings as well as on the outside. You can't just do site work. You have to be doing a certain percentage of work internal to the building, so they have reprioritized that. Um, we bounced a few questions back to them and we'll have some discussion this Friday, and then I will provide an update. And if there are no other questions, that's the conclusion of the superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to know if my colleagues would like to batch four, oh, 4.01 through 4.05?
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on any of those? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes. Okay, Mr. Crandall?
Yeah.
Mrs., Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mr. DeJolarm?
Yes.
And Mr. Cordell?
Yes.
Would someone move item 5.01, please?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. I would just like to take a moment. This resolution is to recognize our principals of, it's National Principal Month, and, um, my sincerest thanks goes out to each and every one of our principals for the work that they have done and continue to do during this, um, interesting time that we now live in. Um, they've always been great folks to have on our team, and they just, uh, when you, when you think you know somebody, they, they step up and shine even more and, um, make me feel very confident about, uh, where we're headed because number one for all of them is their commitment to our kids. And thank you for that. I, I mean, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for your commitment to our students and their families. Anyone else? All those, Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes. Okay. Uh, Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mr. DeJolarm?
Yes.
And Mr. Cordell?
Yes.
Move it.
Second. Discussion. Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes. Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mr. DeJolarm?
Yes.
Mr. Cordell?
Yes.
Item 5.03 is the first reading of two policies. Are there any comments or questions regarding those? It looks like we're good then to move those along. Um, we now have item 5.04, which, uh, was added, and that is to approve the Golden Sun Resolution.
Move it.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes. Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mr. DeJolarm?
Yes.
And Mr. Cordell?
Yes.
Item 6.01, please.
Move it.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes. Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mr. DeJolarm?
Yes.
And Mr. Cordell?
Yes.
I'm wondering, my colleagues, are you interested in batching 7.01 through 7.13?
Yes.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes. Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mr. DeJolarm?
Yes.
And Mr. Cordell?
Yes.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes. Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mr. DeJolarm?
Yes.
And Mr. Cordell?
Yes.
Board forum, Mrs. Albagor, would you like to kick us off?
Um, I just want to, um, say welcome again to Reagan for being our, um, student junior in waiting. Um, thank you to all of our principals for all that they do, and, uh, thank you for every, uh, update and presentation tonight. It's, uh, a lot to take in, but it's definitely well worth listening to. Short and sweet tonight, Mrs. Griffin.
Thank you. Mr. Cordell?
I wanna agree with Mrs. Albagor with everything. She said just, the only thing I would add again, and just to highlight is when, um, when we are receiving the reports, um, under the current model, if we can also kind of have some data on the remote-only kids, um, in terms of engagement, in terms of anything that they, that we can measure or evidence in the way of their, um, our ability, their, their ability, um, the provisions that we're making to keep them connected to our school community would be great. Thank you, that's it.
Okay. Um, Sam? May?
Uh, welcome to the junior representative Reagan. Um, it probably seems like a lot right now, but you'll catch on pretty quick how everything works. And thank you, Mrs. Parkhurst, for all that you do and all of the other principals. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Mr. DeJolarm?
Uh, yes, welcome Reagan. Glad to have you on the team. Uh, thank you to all who was involved in the, uh, summer school, uh, this year. Sounds like it was a successful program, and congratulations to all the principals on your recognition.
Mrs. Cooper?
Um, so I have a few things. Uh, first I wanted to say welcome Reagan. I'm so excited to have you with us. Um, I can't wait to see what type of voice you lend to our meetings. Um, a couple of other things that I just wanted to touch base. Uh, Mr. Povino, I know that you said that we're going to be doing, sending out a survey on the 16th, um, you know, to parents to see what's working and what's not working. Um, I'm curious to see if we're also going to be discussing, um, with our staff, what's working well and what's not working, and what improvements, um, need to be made. I'd really like, um, for them to be part of the conversation and be able to participate with some solutions on issues that we're having, um, and things that we can improve and do well on. I mean, they are, you know, they're the experts and if we can do anything, as we can learn from them, um, just see it's working well. I know, um, that, you know, what I'm hearing is time, you know, having issues with timing and to see if there's anything we can do to be more flexible, to give them enough time that they need to do their planning and their, um, whatever they need to support. Um, the other thing that I was thinking of is I'm hearing also, um, staff with all this new technology that they're learning, um, some type of either education or maybe a place to do like tips and tricks for different programs that they're using. Um, these teachers are all learning all these new programs and I had, I was talking with one teacher and she said, well, she was having an issue with one student being disrespectful, and she didn't even know that she was able to turn off that camera. So simple things like that, that, um, maybe, you know, it's an ongoing type of document that we can use to help all of our staff, um, member. And then Mr. Waldron, I was really excited to see, um, him discuss all the home visits that we did over the summer. If, I'm curious to see how often we're doing home visits now, um, and what actually do they consist of and how the outcomes are of that. So maybe if Ms. Geithner can come back to us at a later date to discuss what our home visits kind of look like and how we're reaching out to those students and families, I think, um, that's something the community would probably also like to know as well. Um, and then my last thing, and this is just me as a pet peeve, um, is, um, we're having some issues with our lunch program. Um, I know me, like, I, I look at the lunch menu every day and I ask my kids if they want to bring her by, and, um, they get to school and that lunch has changed. And so my, so like my youngest, for instance, he doesn't like what they're having and he doesn't like peanut butter and jelly, so that means he's going the rest of the day, you know, without eating, because he doesn't really care for that food. If there's a way that we can figure out, um, and even if that means maybe we're doing our lunch program weekly or, or something like that, um, that way all parents can know, and, um, I know it's been an issue in schools too, is t- students get there and, you know, it's the one thing they really look forward to is, you know, their lunch, um, and they're not getting it. And also, um, with that program, I know we usually have certain days that we do pizza and certain days that we're doing, have chicken or, you know, macaroni and cheese, all those kids' favorite meals, but with kids only going in Tuesday and Wednesday, that means those Thursday, Friday kids aren't getting some of their favorite meals and vice versa. So maybe we need to look how to change it up a little bit to serve all of our students. Um, especially, you know, with, if it is going to change, how are we going to push that out? You know, whether it's updating the app or push it out to families to let them know that those lunch items have changed ahead of time? Cause I mean, my, my little one isn't happy when he comes home a few times and he's still hungry. But that's all I have for me. Thank you, everyone, for all your hard work, all your presentations. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Crandall?
Well, I'll pull a Dan Pallowitz and just say ditto.
Alrighty then. Alrighty. Um, I just wanted to thank you for all of the reports tonight. Tech Department, outstanding efforts as always, and it just, uh, again, another group of folks that, um, just when you think you couldn't be more proud, you're more proud because they stepped up their game and they met the demand. Um, and I hear nothing but positive things. That's a really good thing for our staff and students. Um, extended year team, thank you, thank you, thank you. You folks were, uh, brave and, uh, your courage helped us form a good plan for reopening, I believe. Thank you. Uh, credit recovery folks, thank you for your success. I noted that, uh, some of our seniors managed to graduate on time because of your efforts, and, uh, that's no small thing for those kids. And for the other kids that weren't seniors, it's no small thing that, uh, they're a little closer to being on track and on time. And again, thank you for the efforts that you folks put into that for our kids. And, uh, again, thank you to my colleagues for, uh, coming together and all of us, uh, working together to make a good program for our Fulton families and their children. So I don't have anything else, and you should be excited by that, because that means we can move to item 8.02 during this meeting.
Move it.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion about adjourning this meeting? Um, everyone go, get some rest. Thank you, have a great night, and Mrs. Perry, I'm a yes. Mrs. Cooper?
I'm a yes.
Mrs. Albagor?
Yes.
Mr. DeJolarm?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Mr. Cordell?
Yes.
I believe that's it?
Okay. Gene, I have a question for you.
Yes, Tim.
At the end of each resolution, our names are always different. Do you just have a hat there with our names in it and pull them after every resolution to see who's gonna go next?
Yes, Tim, that's just what I'm doing. Pulling names out of a hat.
Okay.
My hat's down here on the side and I just keep picking them up.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.